Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the village board of the village Atlanta in the order for Monday, May eighth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M. You'll all rise and remove your caps.
The United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Call.
Great.
Here.
Now let's.
Here.
Lake.
Here.
Yates.
Here.
Okay. Martin.
Here.
As a statement of public notice.
Has been posted.
Uh, discussion of possible action on reading the correctional approval of the minutes from the village board meeting from four ten point three.
Big emotion to accept the minutes from boarding from four ten point three.
Thank you. You have a motion in a second. Any further discussion of comments, corrections? Very none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Committee reports. Finance personnel, we. We don't really have a reporting agent there legislators.
Nothing right now.
Parks, rec and beautification.
We're having our first meeting on Monday, the fifteenth at five P M. At the village. Anyone who's interested should join us.
Public safety.
Nothing new to report.
Uh, public works recycling and sewer.
Got a number of items on the agenda. Uh, to talk about specifically number fifteen nineteen twenty twenty-one twenty-three twenty-four. Uh, we've had some right away complaints. Uh, due to snowfalling damage. Uh, those are being addressed by the public works personnel and the pollen contractor. Uh, some may require uh grading and reseating and until the weather gets decent, we won't be able to do any of that. Um. Specifically, uh, Forest View and uh Lan and Village Hills. We've had some uh discussion complaints regarding visibility off of Lake Street and Vine Street on the main street. Uh, that's been addressed by the police department and Chief Bill tells me that there's basically uh, nothing that can be done with it. It's uh within the parameters, site parameters. Uh, the only thing we can possibly do would be to ask the uh homeowner if they would wanna cut things back, but there's nothing we can actually do as far as rules and regulations. Uh, we've got some talk, some talking points to do about uh some uh water issues later on on the agenda and.
Uh, if you're on, Corey.
Uh, let me take part.
You. Parting reports clerk's office.
Um, couple of things I did get um probably the municipalities, they have a local government one-on-one. Um, of course, so for the new people, if they were interested in doing it, um, you, they have webinar dates. There's one in May, which is um, the end of this week or beginning of next week. There's also some in-person dates. So if anybody's interested in that, I do have that. Um, I can get you signed. Um, also as far as utility billing goes, um, there was a couple more bugs that we found in the system and um, adjustments haven't made internally um to everyone's accounts. Those will be um, um, the next billing. You'll see those adjustments. Some people have called gotten their correct amounts and paid that amount, but if you paid the current amount on your bill, there will be a credit adjustment um for the next quarter. Um, when they brought the rates over from our previous system into the new system, didn't recognize that there was two different sewer rates. Um, and they were charging the usage one for the flat fee um instead of the um metered rate. So we got that all figured out and um did a internal adjustment for everybody. So you'll be seeing that next quarter, so.
Thank you, Brenda.
And yeah, and then we're working on getting the coming stuff. Hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll get back on track and getting that um switched over. Um, and on our way.
Thank you. So we're expecting uh in the next billing cycle, all the keys should be worked out by then.
As far as I know, some of the bugs that we found this time, we've, we've addressed. So. So yeah, um, I'm hoping that then the next billing, we'll have that all set up. Um, you should have the A C H payment stuff set up next billing and um credit card payments. Also, um, board overview is next Wednesday um from four to six.
Police department.
A couple of highlights from the activity summary. Uh, as everybody knows, there were a couple of burglaries that landed VP in April. Uh, that suspected the company. He uh stupidly sold some lottery tickets and then tried to redeem them. Those are usually tracked. One for us and for him. Um. Also, uh, there was another accident on uh Lan and Good Hope Roads, another eastbound car failed to see the stop sign. So we requested of the county that they put an additional stop sign up there and see what helps. Um, also in our activity, uh, we have a bike rodeo coming up on June third. It's gonna include uh brake inspections, educational skills course, free helmet fitting, and we're gonna raffle off some bicycles there. I thought it would be supplied by Alliance Club. Uh, this is for children of two, sixth grade. So we have that in elementary school. What times?
Uh, ten to noon.
Thank you, Chief. Item number eight, citizen comments. This is not for public comments on any subject without any discussion by Board of Trustee members or action, except for possible referral to a governmental body or village agent. Uh, I will just say that um, we do have public comment signup sheet by the door. So I know it's gonna take a little time for people to get used to the idea of signing up prior to the meeting. Um, but going forward, I would appreciate it if everybody would sign up if you have comments that you wanna make so that we have a record of it. It will make it a little bit easier on the clerk and it'll make it easier for me to respond to public comments. Uh, which I will put out in a public forum. So any citizen comments? Right. Item number nine, discussion and possible action on approval of resolution from state trust fund loan. So. Brenda, do you wanna?
So others um was talking about it last week or last month, you approved the application um process for that um loan for the M R O payments um to payment. So this week I did get um this back from them. Um. For your approval, I think um. I talked to Phil or I emailed Phil today, did not get back from him, but I think we just need to make a motion on um going after those funds and then I believe there's another process after that.
Uh, I have had the opportunity to review the documents. Uh, basically, the the board of commissioner to the public plan basically started out to start with with full money. And over the years, they loaned out the money to municipalities and they typically charge a market rate or something below that. Uh, in this particular excuse me, in this particular instance, uh, the village is expected to submit an application, which is here and has already been commenced. And secondly, uh, it's affected to pass a resolution, which is also laid out here in a template format. Essentially, uh, the village is committing to borrowing uh two million eighty thousand dollars uh from the trust fund at a market rate of of five percent. And uh, this is for a ten-year term. And I do not believe that there's any prepayment penalty. And as uh the clerk has indicated, the purpose of this borrowing is to be uh contractual uh tax incremental duty obligation that have been entered into in conjunction with the construction of buildings in the village. Uh, if any of you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. Uh, the revolution uh which for uh for Brenda's information has uh a place for the insertion of the trustee's name. Everyone has to vote. Obviously, there's a vacancy currently. Uh, that should be indicated as a vacancy. Uh, a majority of of members on the board need to approve this resolution uh in order for it to be accepted uh by the board of commissioners of the public land.
Yeah. Did anyone have any specific questions uh regarding the resolution of the program?
I think Phil covered it pretty well last time.
And the digital photographs that they request, is that that is that uh due at the time of the application or at the time of award?
Uh, I would believe that they want the complete package to review it uh at the time of submission of application. And in this instance, uh, the resolution.
So we have specific areas that we're going to be using this money for. So there is something that we can photograph? I mean.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Yes. The developments that have gone up.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution from the state trust fund loan, any amount of two million eighty thousand dollars.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Um, any other comments? Okay, I'm going to uh do a roll call vote to this, please, so for the record. As requested.
Great.
Yes.
Now let's.
Yes.
Lake, yes, Yates.
Yes.
Martin, yes. Picat.
Yes.
And then if you would just notate the vacancy as indicated by counsel. Motion carries. Item ten, discussion of possible action on committee and planning commission appointments. So earlier this afternoon. I emailed out um. What I would like to see for the different committees um. And the planning mission. Um, if you didn't get a chance to see that, Brenda kindly printed out copies for everyone here. So I think what I'll do for uh for the record is just read these in um. So for the planning mission, uh, I will be the chair. Uh, Nellis will serve a one-year trustee term. Lake will serve a one-year trustee term. Uh, Commissioner Grimm has accepted a renewal. Janice has accepted a renewal. Taylor is accepted a renewal. Ben Bannick is temporary or in the air or yet to be determined. Finance personnel, um. I have myself temporarily as the ex officio. Uh, Kevin Paquette is still on there. Uh, I've asked Steve Reek and Amy Martin to accept temporary appointments to fill out that committee. Public safety, Amy Martin will be the chair. New appointment at that chair, Colleen Lake will be on that as a new appointment. And then Ellis will be on that committee. Corey committee, I've asked Kevin Paquette, the chair is a new appointment. Steve Reek and Ron Ellis will continue to serve on that committee. Public Works Recycling and Sewer. Uh, Ron Ellis will chair Amy Martin and Steve Reed. That committee remains unchanged. Legislative committee, Steve Reek, Chair Amy Martin. Colleen Lake, it would be a new appointment to the legislative committee. Parks, rec and beautification, I've asked Colleen Lake to chair. She's a new appointment. Uh, Devin Paquette would be on that committee. And I would temporarily sit on that on committee until the vacant trustee spot is filled. So we, with the vacancy, obviously, these committees are a little fluid right now. Um. But these are what I would like to put forward for recommendations and for your approval.
I'll make a motion that we accept the uh appointments to the planning commission of all the trustee committees that have been presented.
If a motion a second, any other discussion? Kevin, anything?
No. Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Discussion of possible action, schedule a public hearing for the rezoning of Parkville A M V zero zero six seven nine five. Excuse me. Discussion of possible action on process before making board trustee position. Okay, I've prepared a handout for this as well. Um, and I've had, I can review this and I think um, we'll just go ahead and read this entire thing into the record as well. Uh, cause I know this is uh a sensitive topic everyone's probably interested in. So options for filling a vacant trustee seats. This is governed by Wisconsin statute seventeen point two four. Uh, which states vacancies in village offices except as provided in section nine dot ten. A vacancy in any elected elective village office may be filled by appointment by a majority of the members of the village board for the residue of the unexpired term or until a special election is held as ordered by the village board, or an office may remain vacant until an election is held. A vacancy is an appointed office. In an appointed office shall be filled in the same manner as the original appointment. So we have three possible options before us. Uh, we can leave the seat vacant until the next regular election. The inherent problem with this approach is that there is not a tiebreaker vote due to an even number of voting members on the board. Special election. Uh, perhaps the most democratic method, but comes at a monetary expense and a lot of time and effort needed by the clerk's office and volunteers to run the election. And so has this delay as the candidates need time to file for the position and to campaign. That would leave the position vacant for a longer period of time. The mechanics of this process um are not specified by the statute and is up to the governing body. So it's my understanding that the filling of a vacant seat on the village board has been handled through an application process in the past. Trustee Ellis, in fact, has indicated that he became a trustee through this very process. Um, there are a few things that I personally like about this process. It opens up the field, so to speak, to people that might not otherwise be inclined to go through the entire process of a regular campaign on a ballot. Which which presumably would encourage more interest in the position. Uh, this could also include previous candidates from the past election cycles, should they still have an interest in serving. Um, it gives the board an opportunity to quote-unquote interview candidates and determine if there are skills or talents that would make that individual a particularly good fit as a trustee. And this process would not require any or impose any extra expenses or additional time from upon, from the already overburdened clerk's office. Um, if we choose to appoint. Um, my suggestion through some discussions with council was that we assemble a short list of questions for the applicants that they could submit uh by a certain deadline. We can have that application period open until a week before the next board meeting on June twelfth, twenty twenty-three. So we can review them in our packet. Uh, then we would have an opportunity to ask follow-up questions at a candidate at the board meeting in the course of interviewing them. Um, if we think this is too short of a window, we can push a decision out to the July tenth, twenty twenty-three board meeting. Leave the application period open until something like June thirtieth. So I apologize if that seems a little disjointed, but in my printing of this, I seem to have achieved a mix of your track copy and the original copy. But I think the gist of the message is. So I don't know folks have a preference or thoughts on a particular method. I've indicated my preferred method, um, but that's just me.
I would agree with that also.
Can you speak into your mics, please?
Yep.
Okay.
I would agree with that also. I think that, I think that uh the appointment process, uh, if we have an application with a couple of questions that would allow like that some citizens who hadn't maybe thought about running for the the seat, they have that opportunity. Um, and then of course, depending on how many applications we get. We could sort through them and uh have a chance to look at them before, you know, the June twelfth meeting. And from there, the board will be able to ask those applicants any additional follow-up questions and then make a suggested appointment and vote on it at that time. I think we would uh, Patrick, you and I had talked about this a little bit and um you had thought that we could put the, if you wanna say, call out for a seat vacancy to be filled, we could do um the S F M S system and also the village website and then the regular postings that we have at the post office and here at the, at the village hall. So citizens would have a way to um make, make aware that that is an option for them. So here to uh fill out the application.
Ron, do you have any thoughts on this one?
Well, as I indicated uh in your notes, that is how I became a member of this board. Um, by a trustee designing and I submitted an application. And there were three of us. And I thought it was a process that was good. Uh, it allowed all of us to treat uh to voice our opinions on certain matters. And uh fortunately, I was selected, and that was twelve years ago. So wow, I would agree that that's a reasonable way to go.
Colleen?
Yeah, I, I, I completely agree. Um, I like the idea that um you could just appoint it and yet you're opening it up so that everybody who's interested can throw their hat in the ring. I think that um, that is a really nice way of uh from opening that up to people who were even on the uh on the ballot this last April, you know, to step back forward and say, yes, I'm still interested in serving. And uh, I mean, ultimately, the decision is is the board's, but I, I do really like the idea of taking application. Um, I would I would think that it would be nice if we could have it done sooner than later. I would probably say, let's open that up for the, the month so that we can revisit this next meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's what I would like uh as well. And then I guess what we would just need to know is, you know. In terms of distributing the comments to the rest of the trustees. We could have the applicants submit to clerk, the clerk would email them to us. That way we could you wouldn't have to have them maybe in by the time, I know you like to get the packets out, we put together
um, would be.
Like a week ahead, right?
Yes.
So I'd like to give enough time for people to give it some consideration and some thoughtful answers to whatever questions we come up with.
And who's gonna come up with those questions?
And that's, that's uh something we need to decide as well. So do we, how many questions do we think we should ask? Um, I think that it would be prudent to have counsel advise us of any questions that we should not be asking. Um, and possibly some suggestions on questions we should other than the obvious ones, which would be, you know, why, why are they interested? Why do they think they're a good candidate? Uh, things along, along those lines. Um. What skill sets or special experience, talents that they might have um that would apply to being a trustee or a particular committee, maybe on the village board. But I think it should be short. My personal feeling is that three good questions should be enough. I don't know, Ron, do you remember how the process went for you?
Uh, so then the application uh describing why and reasons for uh wanting to be on the board. There were no specific questions asked about how I felt the board was doing or what was up before the board. Uh, it was a matter of what I thought I could add to the board. Um. And uh. That's about it.
And did you speak for yourself? Did you like get during citizens' comments and introduce yourself to everyone and?
And the rest of their, yeah, in the audience, in the, the three of us have addressed the board as well as the attendees at the monthly meeting.
Right.
Let's do that sort of thing.
Yeah, absolutely. And then that would be the final step for making a decision. So.
Kevin have any uh any question?
I, I like the idea. It sounds fair and democratic. Um. Had pretty good luck there, I think, with Ron. Now, how long have you been here, Ron?
How long have you been here?
Twelve years.
Twelve years.
Twelve years? That, that's a pretty good process, I'd say.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, how does the how does the board feel about me conferring with counsel and then I could and I submit them uh potential list of questions via email for approval? Or is that something you want us to hash out right now?
Uh, you always have to be sensitive about a walking quorum through email communication. I think uh deciding now probably is the best way to launch this. Uh, I've been taking some notes.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, talents, experience, uh reason for wanting to be on the board. Um.
Obviously, a presentation would be required.
June, June fifth. Three seconds.
Just uh, let's see, so yeah, June fifth, that'll give us, that'll give four weeks. Yes, I think June fifth. Deadline for submissions.
I think Patrick, we could probably you know, according to what Ron had done, it sounds like it was really more or less two questions, why you would like to be on the board and then what maybe what skills or qualifications, you know, you bring to the table, um, that would be beneficial to the, to the village, village board itself. And then at that time, you know, when, when they're here at the next meeting, if they think of anything else that they wanna add from the time they had submitted their application, they could give their short speech or presentations per se. And uh, just leave it as simple as that. And just leave it as simple as that.
The only thing that I might suggest is, you know, please tell us why you would like to be on the board. What special skills or talents can you bring? But then also say, are you willing to make the commitment and time effort to be in a year in your community? Including like all of the assignments to the committees and the meetings and, you know, like, I don't know, I just feel like that extra. Added, it's a big commitment. You know, don't do it just because you want to be here every month. I mean, it's less of a question and more of a.
Right, more of a.
It's more of a.
Right, because I mean, there are a lot of committee meetings and, and budget meetings and other miscellaneous things that. Maybe they're not aware of.
Perhaps one way to phrase it would be. Inferring from the fact that the person has made an application that there is the interest. But one, importantly, are you in a position to provoke the time, energy and effort? That will be required because this is a very hands-on board. Especially some committees.
That's a pretty easy application, right?
Now Hector, are we, do we need to have a, a formal form for this or?
No. Nothing is prescribed. The statute has been this way for quite some time because each community has a different profile. And history. In, in this instance, we don't have many vacant teams. Other communities, well, because they have people that have. Been transferred to other positions, they do this repeatedly. They also try to encourage people. To the extent that they can be citizen members of committees to participate. And they look at that pool because there's some orientation to how both the government works, but. In this community, I don't see that being a problem. We, we don't have a big bureaucracy. And you'd have to get your arms around.
So I've got in my notes then. Three basic questions. Why do you want to be the trustee? What skills or experience do you feel you could bring to the board? And are you in a position to commit the time to serve as a trustee for Landon? One's pretty straightforward.
Then we're going to put that as a SMS message. Of the opportunity, right?
Correct.
We are going to post it. Unofficially, I will ask the administrator of the community group to put it on Facebook with a link to whatever Brenda creates on the website. Right, so website. And hopefully those people that are paying attention will, will all get the message. That's important.
Yeah, I, I will say that, you know, the, the thought occurred to me to do a mailing and, you know, I know there are going to be some people. We're going to hear, well, I didn't hear about it. I didn't have an opportunity. Well. My feeling is, if you're paying attention to what's happening in this village, you'll know about it. If you aren't, you won't. So, yeah, I would entertain a motion then to. Choose an appointment as the method.
Sure.
With the three select questions.
And then June fifth deadline.
That's correct.
Okay, I'll make a motion. We use the appointment option for filling the trustee vacancy. We have the three questions that will be on the application posted on SMS, the website and hard copy postings. And applications will be due back to the village by June fifth.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just maybe about the actual application. Is it something that they pick up here? Is it something they fill out online? Are we able to put a form online that gets emailed to Brenda or do they have to drop it off in person or?
So we, we could do a form, but then I don't want to limit it to. Any kind of technology thing. So, you know, I think if we can just have the questions listed on the village website. And on the hard copy posting somewhere, we can include it in some of the other stuff. You can't do it in the SMS thing. It's gonna be too, too long. And then they just submit it right.
Yeah, right. So maybe we should make up an application for those people who want to walk in and do it, or we can say, or email it to Brenda. Yeah, because you could just answer those questions in an email if you're.
Sure.
Able, okay.
How are you building forms, Nicole?
Great.
Okay, we have a motion, seconded any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? And twelve, discussion of possible action to schedule a public hearing for the rezoning of parcels, L E N B zero zero six seven nine six five, L E N B zero zero six seven nine six five zero zero one. And L E N B zero zero six seven nine five six five zero zero two. Located approximately two zero one by one West Main Street from B two and Q to L I. Light Industrial. So we had a. Plant Commission meeting earlier this evening and the planning commission. Did make a recommendation to have we schedule a public hearing for this matter. For June twelfth. We have some notice, we're fine with that. And I know that's not ideal for you guys, but.
If we can, if we could do it sooner, that would be. Really, really hold it long.
Yeah, the unfortunate thing with doing it sooner is that. Because of the process and the next scheduled planning mission meeting, or we could. We could ask that we do a special planning mission meeting, but. But it's gotta go. We don't want to get the cart before the horse. Because if we do, and then you want to change something, you know, then we gotta restart this whole thing over again. So Hector, we talked a little bit about some possible options, but do you want to maybe lay those out for the board?
Well, the. What is before the. The Board of Trustees is a modification of the zoning or the parcel. In question, and that entails modifying the zoning map. And anytime you have a modification in the text or in the zoning map. You have to follow statutory procedures and the reflection of that in the village code. The village code requires that there be publication of an opportunity for the public to comment on that. And that requires what they call a class two publication, that's two insertions. Seven days apart and the last insertion has to be at least seven days. Before the holding of the hearing. And what is peculiar is that the plant commission had a role in this. And makes a recommendation to the village board. But it is the village board that holds the hearing and the purpose of the village board holding the hearing. Is that the decision makers hear firsthand what the citizens feel about the proposed change. And after the public hearing, it's referred back to the fine commission. For their final recommendation. And the goal of not putting a cart before the horse. Thems from that arrangement. In other words, the plant commission can meet in advance, in advance. Formulate tentatively its position, but has to really wait. Until the public has been heard. The members of the plant commission can attend the public hearings. Following the public hearing, they can be, make a recommendation to the board. And then the board basically makes a decision. And so the time period is really dictated by the notice provision. And the black commission meet on a regular basis. The village board meets on a regular basis. Special meetings can be held, but. It has to be a definitive reason why a special meeting is being held because. If you have special meetings for one applicant. You have to be treating all other applicants the same way. And typical different sheet, other than the fact that we're all busy and we want to get on with business.
Alright, so what you're saying is that. That. If Brenda did her first class two publication of this public meeting, this Friday, the twelfth. She would have to do another one on Friday, the nineteenth. It would have to be at least seven days before the twenty-sixth. Which would be the earliest you could possibly have a hearing. And that would be, the village board would have that hearing and then it would get kicked back to the planning permission, which then doesn't meet until June twenty-second. Something like that. Right? Because that would be past the, the date of the planning commission. So then the planning commission would have to see it on June twenty-second. Oh, wait, actually, it'd be June twenty-ninth because that's the last Thursday in June. And then Mr. Grant would be waiting for a result until after the tenth of July. Which is the next village board meeting after the planning commission. So I get public notice. I get that, but I don't know that we're serving, you know, the person who wants to, has an active offer to purchase on this. Because that puts us all the way into August, basically. Right? July, yeah, July tenth.
You could conceivably have a special fine commission meeting. Prior to the public hearing. This is a matter that also for your benefit has come up before the fine commission. So it's not something that they are looking at for the first time.
Ben, you had a comment?
What I had in my mind is based on past. Similar situations. It seems like a few years ago, we were doing a lot of these.
Yeah.
Types of applications and it's been a little while. What I was thinking was. If you held, held the hearing on June twelfth. Then the commission has a chance to take up the packet materials, I mean, one fit. Go back and forth, discuss anything, et cetera. Assuming that. You know, the two, the applicant and the plan commission are too far apart. And if you move forward with the public hearing on the twelfth. I think. Then you could conceivably have a special plan commission meeting. And board action lined up for that night. And for some reason, the two parties are, are apart, you could still have a public hearing on the twelfth. And then you fall back to the June twenty-ninth plan commission meeting as your backup date. Where if the materials haven't come back before the plan commission meeting. Depending on how willing or interested the board was, then we can do a. Combined meeting on the twenty-ninth.
I think anything that we can do to help come to a conclusion, I would be willing to do special meetings personally, among the rest of the board.
And we've generally been able to accommodate those requests given enough notice. So unless anybody has any exceptions to the notion of that. I agree, I'd like to try to help them get this resolved as quickly as possible, given that they're under the time constraints with their offer of purchase. So idea would be to have pretty much everything together and. To the PC planning mission on May twenty-fifth, make sure everybody's on the same page so that. Well, we're ready and able to possibly. Pull the trigger after a public hearing.
I do believe that everything is in. There's something else I'm not aware of, but I do believe everything's in.
The C S M.
Yeah, the C S M.
Is that for. The owner, the owner, existing owner right now being involved.
Yeah.
It's like we've been, the attorneys have been trying, it's, it's, we cannot get them to. Give us a hand, let alone a phone call. And it's been a daily phone call, emails, the attorneys have seemed to. Get daily done.
Yeah, unfortunately, we can't really exert pressure that I'm aware of in the matter, it's. You have to keep pressing on, I guess, and we'll do the best we can to. To dial things up and, and be ready to do what we can do. But I would just make sure that you're, you've got a very open dialogue with.
I believe Hector, counselors, our counselor is, I believe, is that correct, Hector?
Oh, yes. Mr. Wood and myself have made ourselves available. But the C S M and the participation of the owner, like two essential things. Because otherwise, anybody off the street can come in basically, turn to you, but. Saying, well, might change the property without the property owner's understanding involved.
Okay, so it sounds like everybody's in agreement then that we're open to. Some flexibility, but the, the six twelve date. Is the public hearing date that we have chosen. Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed?
What time on call?
In the past, we've done it as part of the agenda, so it would just be the first thing on the agenda, so seven o'clock. If that's what you want to do.
I have thirteen, discussion of possible action regarding enforcement of undesirable storage issues previously referred by the playing mission. So I think.
At the previous fine commission, there was a discussion with regard to three subject properties. In that it was concerning by the fine commission members that. They were not being used and operated within the parameters of the ordinance to. An example, possibly the storage of outdoor items. Not pertaining to the business where they were stored. And the district not allowing outdoor storage. The question came up, well, what, what does, would it take to commence enforcement action? And since that time, I've looked at the ordinances. And as I have operated in the past, in order for an enforcement action to take place. That is to prosecute someone. We have to have the approval of the village board. So with regards to the concern of the fine commission, my recommendation. As it's kind is that whenever there is a complaint. That it be referred jointly to the building inspector in the police chief. The police department has an ordinance that authorizes it. To enforce not only the traditional violation, traffic enforcement, but also. The zoning and other requirements of the zoning code. And that between the two of them, they decide how they want to proceed. In some instances, it probably would be beneficial, the building inspector is accompanied by a police officer. Uh if for no other reason than to have a witness. And then the next step would be. Uh in conjunction with that site visit. And interaction with the person in charge or the owner preferably. That something in writing be sent out. To. Create a record that an effort had been made. And that the item then be calendered. So that thirty days out, there can be a follow up uh by either of the two enforcement individuals. And in the absence of uh compliance. Or in the case of partial compliance, there can be a decision. Made as to whether an effort is being made, because sometimes it's very difficult. To uh. Get people out to a site to correct problem. And typically, the owner may not have those resources. But the effort should be made to demonstrate the willingness on the part of the village to encourage people. To clean up their property, basically. If there is a failure on their part, then the owners. Then there should be a throw made from the police department, building inspector to the fine commission. Fine commission can. Discuss. The worthiness of doing something. And then the fine commission can refer to the village board. And at that point, uh the village board will have to decide what the most effective enforcement mechanism is. There are two basic options for enforcing the ordinances. Initiating uh a complaint in municipal court. However, the municipal court only has the authority to impose a fine. And the judgment can be obtained from the municipal court. It can be recorded uh uh in the register of deeds. Uh basically as a form of a lien, if you will, against the property. But unless there's a foreclosure against the property, it's just a lien. And the problem may still continue. The other option would be to get approval from the board. To go to certain court. To not only enforce the ordinance, but also to get an order from the court. Uh or injunction. Mandating that the property owner takes some action or seeds from some activity. That's more costly. Uh it will incur a greater time delay. Uh but again, it comes down to a policy decision by the board as to how. Uh it wants to upgrade the situation with regards to a lot of properties. The village has been going through uh or transformation of the makeup of its citizenry in that. Many new people are moving into the village. And in my opinion. Many of the newcomers don't distinguish between whether they're in Manominee Falls or in Lannan or Sussex. They just want to live in a nice community. And because historically, we have been. Uh an industrial community, if you will. Uh there are some things that many in other residential areas would not tolerate. Uh as time goes on, uh I think the village uh can bar kind of program so. Systematically trying to correct problems. So at this point, my recommendation is that the village board. Direct. Myself. The village president. And the police chief and the building inspector to convene to come up for a formal. Description of what I just orally described. So that we can talk about it, so that. I for one not make assumptions about the capability or resources of the police department for that matter. On part of the building inspector, so we can have some coordination. Uh when we bring these matters before uh the municipal court. By the way, these are matters that we have not been bringing, many of which uh before the. Uh municipal court, simply because we haven't. Had a formal process, we screening these kinds of things, although we have had some success in the past. But I'm proposing that we we have some kind of systematic process so that. Potential violators uh can be wanted. This is what the village has been doing, and this is what has been approved by the village board. To try to upgrade the condition of some substandard properties.
Is there any distinction um? Between municipal court and circuit court in terms of allowable ability of per diem assessments?
Both can uphold it. Except that if we want to direct the removal of some things. Or the uh termination of what we would consider to be a nuisance activity. We do have to go to the circuit court. The municipal judge, the mostly can do is. Determine whether the individual charged is guilty and then. In the sentencing portion, determine whether the per diem sanction applies. Our ordinance, like many other ordinances of other communities state. That each day that the violation continues uh constitutes a separate violation. And in one community recently. That we represent, we went after a swamp lord. And uh. I got a judgment from a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Now we're looking at the possibility of foretelling on that property. Uh you see what could be done in that regards in terms of removing property.
We have in the past. Uh gotten a per diem. Uh fines uh at various locations in the village. And so we've been fortunate in that way, we have done that and succeeded in doing that. Quite a few, yeah, quite a few. So that is, that's always been our initial, yes, starting point. Also, when you collect for DM, these are attorney's expenses also. So I would entertain a motion unless there's further discussion.
I will make a motion that uh we allow the village president, village council. The village building inspector and chief of police to come up with a formal process to. Enforce the undesirable storage issues that we have, and that was referred to us from the planning commission.
Um I don't think you want to make it just undesirable storage.
Or all.
Rather than stipulating.
And all of this process starts from a written request, right, which?
A written complaint, yes. And we have those forms. And the in the office referendum, they are also available on the internet. Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Well, I might as well start off as the Pollyanna of the of the group, um just because. It I totally agree with the um per diem and the fines. But is there anything in the interim that would be off? I think the ultimate goal is for people in compliance. And so I just want to add that that step in there of. Approaching them, talking to them, explaining to them what the ordinance is, um why we why we feel it's important, what help could we offer? You know, there might be a really good reason why an older person hasn't trimmed his trees, you know, and so I I want to add that um.
That's the first contact that they would have with like the building inspector. And you know, police chief or another officers, that initial contact of explaining, we have a complaint. Here's what, you know, you shouldn't be doing, I mean, that's already part of that process.
The goal is to come up with a documented set procedure, multi-step procedure, progressive. Discipline, if you will, uh notifications. Probably via certified mail, so that we have a a document track. Showing that efforts have been made to communicate and gain compliance, and then it would stipulate when. Further enforcement action would be. So that would be the the goal of that group is to formulate that plan. And putting the police on the back for our final. And review and and or approval from the board.
Alright, understood.
Do we have a motion and a second, and the other a second? All those in favor? Any opposed? Uh I have fourteen, discussion of possible action regarding landscape restoration proposals related to water system expansion project. So as many of you know, um. We've had multiple attempts at restoration efforts throughout the village by different contractors. Uh in regards to the water system expansion. Um virtually all of them failed miserably. Um in some instances, more than once. Um so I um geez, I don't know, six weeks ago or so. Reached out to Strand. Um knowing that spring was eventually going to get here and we needed to kind of get fall rolling on. Getting these properties taken care of. Um so I connected with Ben uh Ben's. Strand sent out representatives to do a village-wide survey of the different properties, do some assessments in terms of quantities that might be required at each property. Whether it was private property, right away property, all those kinds of things um. And I guess I'll I'll let you kind of take it a little bit from there, Ben, if you don't mind, and just kind of outline what your. What your process was on.
Yeah, that's fine, we um. Both eyes at night, each each did our own independent walkthrough, and we came up with a list of fifty nine properties. Uh to include along with the square footage, uh we talked to a couple of landscapers. Before putting together a request for proposal. Um to get tips on, you know, methods, et cetera. A couple of things that we put out there was. They cannot use that erosion that netting that everyone hated so badly uh for last go around. And let's authorize on a case by case basis. And you know, there's a different seed mix. We were using a standard like Wistock. Certified seed mix for typical public projects, a lot of municipalities adopt that. Or the one landscape landscaper uh recommended the. Reinders, deluxe fifty mix, whatever. Uh we're also very clear and explicit about watering requirements, where the contractor will be responsible for watering. For the first thirty days through germination. At a minimum of one inch per week combined rainfall for their watering. Um so made that all kind of clear, laid out expectations for warranty, I guess. Um you know, this is an important thing that I want the board to understand about warranty is. You know, look, a lot of people, let's just call it for what it is, there's a lot of irony involved in, you know, people being. Less than enthused about having to connect to municipal water and then being told that they have to water the grass, right? Um so the contractor will have to water the grass uh for those first thirty days. Uh we told the contractor that our expectation in the request for proposal, that our expectation is to do a pre-construction walkthrough. Develop the work plan kind of site by site. Knowing that. Uh you know, most properties are probably just going to need topsoil, seed and hydromulch. Uh some properties are going to need need to be completely stripped, and some properties are probably best left alone. Uh and just watered and fertilized and cared for so that the grass can kind of have a chance to get better established. Um then we would do a walkthrough right after the work is complete. We would do a walkthrough at thirty days, check germination. Um and then we would do a another warranty walkthrough a year later. After the warranty, and that's why I want folks to pay attention to. After the warranty walkthrough, anything that fails, like after next spring. Or at next spring, they would have to. Recede water for thirty days. If it reaches termination, then they're done. Uh one thing that even the current contractors were sensitive to is. They want to get out of this infinity loop of this. Having to come back and come back and come back and come back. So we tried to spell out the warranty. Um I will say, you know, there were fifty nine properties on our list. We had Brenda put out a call. Put out the list on the website, put out a call if folks felt like they were missed, I think we'd only received. Two or three emails from folks that felt they were missed. Um only talked to one person so far that said, just leave my property alone. Uh unfortunately, last fall, we did have that situation occur with a couple of people who had. Uh were fed up with the village, went out, hired their own company, and then the village contractor came in and. Tore up that new work and redid it and made it worse, so. Um we're trying to avoid any of that situation, so make sure you contact your neighbors, et cetera. Um so another aspect of this is payment, we'll pay for it. We told the USDA that we're reaching pretty deep into the provisions of the contract for the village to be able to hire their own landscaper. Uh and backcharge the the contractor for it. Uh USDA really appreciated our willingness to go there, but said that just. They've never seen that procedure turn out well, but for either side. That the village has a lot of contingency money left, and they would just support the village hiring a contractor. And covering it out of the contingency fund. No decision on that, but they're okay moving in that direction. Um so we talked to, I think we issued this RFP to send it to contractors. Uh the way that the contractors or the permanent were kind of uh. Generally references that we had referred and passed along to. Um we sent it to both Kelly's Greenscape and Ideal Property Management here in the village of Lannan. Uh both of them declined, Kelly's because they're busy for the season. Ideal because they strictly work for residential property owners, not for municipalities. Um we also sent it to uh a couple of folks that. You don't mind me saying, Patrick, you reached out to a couple disgruntled, at least one disgruntled person and said, well, who would you recommend? Um so we sent it to that company as well. We were expecting to receive back a minimum of three uh semitals. We put out the RFP a week ago Friday. It was due Friday at noon. And we received one seminal on Friday. Uh we've received one partial seminal today. Uh so the complete seminal that we received last week was from Hartford Landscape and Supply. Uh we asked the. People that proposed to submit, generally speaking, a approach for what they would do, the methods they would use, the equipment, the materials, et cetera. Does everyone on the board have that seminal in your packet? Um so generally speaking. Uh they would install topsoil as needed, seed, cover crop, fertilizer, hydromulching. Um they have power rate, you know, general difficult equipment, they provided references. Um their pricing combined here. Uh for fifty nine properties of turf restoration, twenty three thousand six hundred and twenty three. And then um to do some ditching on Forest View Drive to try to minimize the effects of kind of the local acute flooding. Um cutting in for bitches, sixteen thousand four hundred and seventy. Um. Not sure exactly what to make of the second proposal at this point, I think the board should discussion discuss it, uh that's from Green Hills. Nursery, I believe they are out of Germantown. Um. They were one of the companies that provide. They were one of the companies that provided some advice to us as we were preparing the RFP indicated they were interested in submitting. Um and I don't know what happened, but they they kind of went silent last week and didn't submit, and then we all of a sudden heard from them today. Saying that they were interested. Um they did not, as I said, they provided a pretty informal seminal. With a unit price of two dollars and forty-three cents per square foot for its whole price that comes out to. Um I think it was thirty-two eight fifty and one cent. I'm sorry, thirty-one eight fifty and one cent uh for all of the work. Um both of these companies are available to do the work yet this spring. Um that was another reason some of the other uh companies declined is that they just weren't available to do the work this spring. Um. So that's where I stand. I think the intent here is that uh folks can. Get under contract back relatively quickly, um that they would still be able to get a good crack at this work before the end of the month. And depending on what happens with the weather, uh quite frankly, uh. We can't get someone under contract soon, then it would best be left till fall. I know is a disappointment to you, President Yates. Uh so it's kind of the situation we're at right now.
The uh the proposal from the company in Germantown, they gave you the unit price. Did that also include the ditching on Forest View or?
Yes.
Okay.
What's the difference between two, three, four, one, six, and one, seven here? I mean, they have the same younger. It's not the total of those two.
Yeah, I think one of them is a is a proposal with an approach and the other is a sample contract which reads very, very, very similarly. Um.
So it's not the, it's not the total of those two, it's one or the other.
Correct.
And how much is left in our contingency fund then?
Um approximately nine hundred thousand dollars. Uh with the action that the Public Works Committee previously took, we're still. Uh showing about two hundred thousand dollars still left.
I mean, I like the fact that the Germantown company is at thirty-one thousand and change, but also. Why don't they have a better proposal?
Yeah, right, I mean, I mean.
Last minute, like a job of theirs didn't go through, like, well, let's quick. Submit something whereas I'm I'm a little, I'm leaning a little more towards the Hartford Landscape and Supply because it is a complete proposal. So it's it's broken out and it's turned in on time. And I think that's really one of the most important things to wait for someone to come in after the fact and it's not even a. Actual real proposal.
Yeah, for example, um Hartford um landscape supply. They're responsive to provide the sample contracts, the insurance. All right, ask them a question on the insurance about the additional insurance, did you account for that and their cost? Be fair, they said no, they didn't. It would be an extra five hundred dollars to be at the additional insured endorsements beyond the numbers that I read too. Um so anyhow, I feel like uh. For what it's worth, they submitted well in advance of the deadline, like a couple of days early. I know we only had this thing open for a week, but you know.
Yeah.
Isaac was kind of working phones all week, trying to figure out what was going on and we didn't hear from him until five o'clock.
I'm I'm thinking really uh technically. The correct thing to do would be to go with Hartford Landscape and Supply, just for the the basic fact that it turned in on time. It is a complete proposal. And you know, you've had. Some talks back and forth with them and and you know, made some issues that they need to be aware of and they were receptive to that. Um. I don't know if there's any other discussions, that would make a a a motion. If that's all right, unless anyone else has anything to say right now.
I think you're tracking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then I'll make a motion that we use Hartford Landscape and Supply to do the restoration work that is in the contract that they have. Their proposal twenty-three, four, one, six, or four, one, seven, does it really matter which one?
I don't think it matters.
I'll just say proposal twenty-three, four, one, six.
You have a motion in a second.
Then get some further discussion then. Um. We need some direction here on what level of involvement you want from Strand as far as the oversight and coordination here goes. Um understands. Uh you know, we're doing this because everyone wants it done right for the last time. Um there is a bit of a. We would normally never be on site full on full-time while they're doing this. I don't, I'm kind of struggling to figure out what would be appropriate though, short of. Walking through painting stuff on the ground, being there while they're there, et cetera.
Um do we need to have someone there full-time with them? We don't, I mean, there are contractors, they should, besides the initial painting of, here's the parameters of this residence and this one.
That's what I would have said to you the last four times that I tried to fix it, like, I mean, that's what I'm saying, we're struggling.
I mean, I want it done right, but on the other hand, you know, I don't think we should, like you said, should be babysitting, so I mean. I appreciate, I I think you should be involved initially with, like you said, the the marking of. The removal or what what needs to be done on each property, but beyond that. You know, after the fact of maybe after the the three-day germination. Maybe Strand would go through or, you know, do a kind of a uh check. But other than that, I don't know if we really.
We'd be happy, don't get me wrong, we'd be happy to hand part of it off to, for example, if we do kind of this pre-construction walkthrough with the contractor. Paint up some areas. Sure, by the time we get back to the office, we'll have fifteen phone calls about a way to paint my art. But anyways, if we had somebody from the village, whether that be a trustee or an employee for that matter. Participate in that and they. And they know what they're looking for and can check on them on a daily basis while they're doing the work. That could be helpful. I heard, I think for now, my assumption is that. Strand participates in first walk-through, the post-work walk-through, or pointing out like, no, you missed this, or yes, you got it. Um and then the germination walk-through, we we could be, we don't have to be, someone from the village should be. And just kind of go from there.
Yeah, I'll, I intend to be involved in just about every step of that. Yeah, I'm, I I think as as much as I would like to have more options to choose from, um. You know, we knew this was gonna be a tight schedule, so it wasn't like Strand just threw these out there to the wind. I mean, these were all contacted by phone, asked if they were interested, either said they were or weren't, and. And only one, one responded, so I mean, we we need professionals. To hopefully get in here and do this right the last time. Um not guys wandering around in. Flip-flops on their phone half the time we're doing the walkthroughs, so. Um. I'm hopeful, but. Unfortunately. cautiously optimistic. But I would like to get this started as soon as possible. So we have motion, a second, a further discussion. Uh second, after description on topsoil, because if you remember. The description that was in the original water project was very vague. And I'm custom laying the word stream. Alright, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. You select. Hartford, obviously contracted for the restoration. Uh discussion and possible action regarding proposal from Strand Associate for Engineering Services related to the water system and electrical upgrades. And Wishrean Ridge and Landon Estates Wellhouses. Which one he wants to be.
So this is for engineering services, along with the um. Budget, how to use the nine hundred thousand dollars, the contingency money. Uh you'll recall that whole spreadsheet and whole budget was laid out at a past Public Works Committee meeting. And believe also at the last uh village board meeting. Uh so this, the engineering proposal that aligns with it, it's consistent with uh the values previously shown. Um so the one twist that I want to share with you and make sure I point out is we since had. Uh I guess it's almost two weeks ago now, we had a phone conference with USDA to talk through. Village's intended use for the contingency fund, and there's. Uh one of our assumptions was not true. Um. We were assuming that, you know, this loan has indeed been extended. And we're assuming that, okay, here's our plan. We're gonna spend seven hundred-ish thousand dollars of this, there's gonna be about two hundred thousand left. And then USDA will tell you how we want to use the other two thou- two hundred thousand. Um they said, no, look, we've had. Um. I I think they bid fourteen projects in Wisconsin using USDA RD money uh so far this year. And they said all but one of them has come in substantially over budget. And um any, they basically said, Landon, you've got one shot to put together a complete budget and how you want to spend the money. We'll approve it and then whatever you don't spend, we're gonna de-obligate and take back. Uh which is understandable. So the trick is, as we talked about at the that one Public Works Committee meeting, two hundred thousand dollars is really. Uh. In between dollar value, figure out what to do with uh exactly. Uh in terms of water main, um you know, you're talking maybe five hundred feet water main doesn't really do much good. Um in that regard. Um I think a lot of the budget is spent taking care of a lot of really critical operational items. Um there's a chance we can come up with, I know Sarah's getting other quotes for meter replacements and stuff like that, our number in there might have been low. So we can co- probably come up with a way to spend some of that last two hundred thousand, but not all of it. Um but then there's. Another idea altogether, which is a lot of the water facility upgrades would likely also be tid-eligible. Um so whereas you've got nine hundred thousand left, you could spend about. Instead of seven hundred thousand doing facility upgrades, you can spend maybe. Just for round members sake, two hundred thousand dollars doing facility upgrades and you could spend seven hundred thousand dollars doing water main. And say, get it further down um toward Colley's on Good Hope Road and. Start making some headway toward repairing Good Hope Road as an example. Um and then explore um ways of paying for that other critical chunk of water facility we're using TID funds. Um so that right now is a big question mark. Um I've got a calendar appointment on Wednesday with the village's municipal finance consultant, elders. Um and we are going to kind of talk through if that's possible in budgeting, et cetera. Um so what I've asked here in the recommendation. Well, for one, I broke down the engineering fees for what's like truly only related USDA. And a couple of items that could be USDA or TID eligible, could go either way. Um and the recommended action would be to authorize the village president to enter into an agreement or agreements. Uh for the scope of services. Um on the total amount up to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and it says here. You know, we'll follow up with formal agreements, what's what's a funding strategy is decided. Um so I would expect that over the next two weeks, we'll kind of. Finalize the best way to use that contingency fund. Um and kind of go ahead from there.
What's our deadline for getting this budget for that contingency money into the state type?
Yeah, the, in April, the um. The loan closing was extended for another. I'm sorry, not the loan closing, whatever, the deadline for spending the grants for completing the project was extended for one more year. Okay, so it's April of next year.
I'd like to. Go ahead then.
One other thing. Uh that could impact this are bidding requirements, so Hector, this one's for you. State law says that if. Uh change order. Exceeds fifteen percent of the original contract amount, then you might have to rebid or go up for bids for that work. Um so for example, the original uh water facility contract under USDA is approximately. Four hundred and half a million dollars. We're talking about change ordering in, you know, another four hundred or half million dollars. We have to sort out if that meets specifically the criteria, because I think there's more than what I just said. But if that would have to get rebid, USDA said everything has to. Uh comply with the new federal funding BABA requirements, buy and knock America, build America. Where everything has to be uh manufactured, procured, whatever in the US. And they said, actually, that's the reason why uh they've had all, nearly all their projects go over budget so far. So another piece of this, we're trying to sort out, okay, what can. The village could probably direct purchase a generator, the village could probably direct purchase some water meters, some other things. It doesn't all have to get change ordered in and whatever. Um but we'll have to talk to others and figure out, you know, are we gonna run into anything because of money and time, we want to avoid rebidding. Uh to the extent possible.
I'd like to see the grant money paid for whatever it is we could get done and not TID money. There's a TID money basically was for the village to spend. On village projects, we got road projects, we got repair and that sort of thing. So whatever the grant money can pay for, whatever we can push towards there, that drive.
Yeah, and I think so the Good Hope Road Water Main, for example, is already identified as a TID two projects. As is the reconstruction of Good Hope Road. So it's a matter of, you know, maybe once you've otherwise done the water main and the road. For another five years. You do that now, but you get. The full use of your grant money.
Right.
Uh as opposed to. Um you know, waiting a few years and not having, you know, that extra two hundred thousand.
That's also to rebuild part of that road.
Yeah, and we're not inventing new projects here, you know, all of these things are identified. What I've identified is TID eligible, um you know. Yes, generally speaking, new water facilities, new water main, new water tower, those items are TID eligible. So it's just a matter of. If you look at the five-year picture. Both options are probably gonna get done. Um you know, you want to advance one of those. To now, in order, you know, to take advantage of the grant money. That's what's gotta get sorted out.
The the goal is to maximize the value, right? Whatever we can do to maximize the available funding and value. Because they're all long-term assets, right? There's always spending.
So was her course of action on this?
To hear the scope of services and pay the others.
Well, so the recommended action here is authorize village president to enter in. Into an agreement or agreements for the scope of services for an amount of up to one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So basically, what we're saying is the scope that is in our letter here. Um. We know that we're gonna do it because it's related to the water facilities and those. That work fast to get done, as I'm sure Sarah will explain later today. Um it's just a matter of how it's gonna get paid for, how it. It's just a matter of how it's gonna get paid for, how it gets paid for, it's gonna determine how it gets contracted. So we're basically saying, if you would. Uh let us work with Patrick to finalize those. Appropriately. Then we won't have to come back to. Village Board next month before we do this, right?
Yes, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh item sixteen. No. Nope, sixteen, special and possible action on approval of temporary beer permit for Hittathon.
This is for the um Little League, they usually every year they um have this long parade for the Hittathon at the park. And um just the one day there, I think the rain date's the following day.
You know, motion a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seventeen, discussing the possible action on approval of operators license for Hittathon. Further discussion. Chief, you did your background already, it looks like, good. Motion in second and all those in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, item eighteen. Discussing impossible action on approval of a kids parade for July third, twenty twenty three. This was an item that was brought up to me. Mister Summers, on behalf of the Lions, that. Like to do that, do you want to speak on this, Tom or Jim or?
I have been approached by the principal of Landland Elementary, I'm talking to him before the July kids party. I took it to the Lions Club the last Monday night. Was conceived well. The. Parade would be patterned after what the Lions Club in Waterford does. The assistance the Lions Club would need from the village would be our police department. Because of the road closures. And their assistance. I've had a few discussions with the chief. And we have a lot more kids in our community now. And this is just kids. Sixth grade and under. No commercial involvement. Basically go from the school down to the Lions Club house. The Lions Club would provide hot dogs, chips, maybe ice cream sandwiches. Something for the kids to do. Because we have the bike rodeo beginning to. And we don't have anything else until middle of August, the lock for open healing. And the police night out. And again, this is just for the kids. Anyway, I look next door, there's kids playing on the hills, kids running around. I think it would just be something to do, minimal cost to the village. Depending on if we get the approval tonight, they have to check into insurance coverage because there has. To have been a writer for any parade, including Halloween or the Tru- Lightning. But again, other than that, which. I didn't go after that until I find out tonight. Would be the involvement of our police department.
So what exactly? Are the kids doing it, there there's no involvement from. Community as of like folks, like you'd see normally. The bands and, you know, the Shriners and all their things, you know, parade. What exactly are these kids doing from the school to? The club, are they just walking, are they riding a bike, are they, I mean?
Decorate your bike, your poster, wig in your buggy. We did this in Butler when I was a kid. It's not. A huge extravaganza, it's something for the kids. To be involved with hopefully get their parents, there would be permission slips. It would just be a fun event for the kids.
So the Lions would be. In charge of everything. We we're we're supplying. Our police force to shut the streets off. But in, you know, essentially the Lions are doing everything else. The the permission slips that you're talking about and everything else, correct?
Checks.
Okay.
The permitting from the county.
Or you would have to. Yes.
Would we be able to have a permanent time?
That's a good question. Uh let's see, but uh four month. Um for the car show. So. So aside from the possible time constraints for that permit, have you calculated any type of cost associated with? Extra police efforts that would be needed? Not specifically, but I would. I know uh imagine five or six people. Times there where you're in. Probably one or three months. What would the hours be?
Start at either ten or thirty and walk from there down to the Lions Club. And guessing an hour and a half. And then people would be down in the park with their kills.
That an hour and a half, the walk, two and a half blocks? Uh it just seems like really long, I would think it'd be something that you done by twenty, yeah, fifteen minutes, but. But I am just. I don't know.
I don't know why you're just betting at the end of the parade.
Right, yeah.
Minimum of an hour. Five guys, but forty bucks an hour.
Is there any requirement for them to be? Police officers, I don't, you do get my email where I asked some of these questions, I didn't.
Close the road. If he's gotta do that.
Right.
And for security reasons, I feel it's safer. To have the police department involved in that. I don't want any kids getting hurt or at all, it's.
I mean, my initial thought is. This sounds like a great idea, but I think this should have been brought up. Months ago. I mean, we're. In almost mid-May. I mean. With chief having to to do his things with the county road for permitting. Uh if the car show takes four months to do or get approval. I mean, I I don't know why it would be different to close the road for a July third parade. In any less time.
You know, I think it should be a shorter amount, it's kind of that is close.
Right.
And really, the whole event could be from ten noon, but the road closure could just be for that. Ten to ten forty-five, just to make sure everybody's off the street. And then then ice cream sandwiches can be done when the road open.
Yeah, and there is crosswalks too, so I mean, after there's some stragglers.
Yeah, I support the idea, as long as we can do it without any liability exposure to the village. Um and we have to just kind of put a dollar amount to it as to what it's gonna take.
Well, I think the big thing is to find out. See if the chief can find out. How long it's gonna take to get a permit to close.
Well, I have one meeting between now and then.
Both of the roads. I think you gotta close both of them.
Yep.
For this one. Then we could get some more additional. Positive. Factors to figure out and. Make a decision. The next meeting, once we have more information. Less than a month out, because there, me will be June twelfth. And uh. They only give you two and a half, three weeks to promote it. Per se, you know, to get. The word out, because you can't promote it until we know for sure, we need the permits, what the cost is gonna be. Et cetera, et cetera, and that's. Kind of like my point of this should have been brought up a couple of months back.
We should postpone everything until next year, let them come back at it. Uh by the first of the year, if they want to do it again, because. Inevitably, something will go wrong and we'll get the blame, but no.
I mean, it's always a rush situation, you get something. In the next month and a half, you know, it doesn't give us a lot of time. Yeah, so like we did our. At the beginning of the year, we had kind of the discussion about all the upcoming events for the year, right?
Right.
And kind of add this to the list of ideas for the year, so it can get planned out ahead of time in the meantime. Maybe we can do some further research on the permitting requirements, any costs associated with that. Insurance. Requirements and costs. Yeah, I would make a motion to postpone this. Or. Not approve it for this year, right, and and allow it for next year if they can come up with uh. You know, we they'll give us time to, on our end, look at. You know, the permitting process and costs involved. I I just think it's trying to push something too quickly, and then if we do. By June twelfth, there's really no time to promote it properly. So. I guess I'll make a motion to. Deny the uh July third parade for this year.
I got a suggestion.
Uh one one second. Do we have a motion and did we have a second?
I have a suggestion, what about taking sometime just before the car show? Letting kids, because there you already have the road shut down and everything, that way there's time or time to.
Yeah, there's a lot of traffic and it's.
Just a suggestion.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries to uh deny the request for this year. Item nineteen, discussing possible action on water system operation maintenance issue and upgrades at Whispering Ridge Pump House.
I would uh. Thank Sarah from Mid City to bring us up to date on. Yeah, some interesting news.
Um so um. It was started at Land and Estates, um so. Um Mid City will be on site other tomorrow, digging one of the. Um water service leaks that was found, so I'll provide an update once that repair is done. Um we did do some work on their. Water meter on Thursday of last week. So um up until the previous Friday, things were working great, no issues. Came in on Monday and their meter was reading zero. Um despite knowing that they were using water, um so ended up getting the vendor out, there was. Um some stuff stuck in the meter, damaged into the internal of the meter, they took that back to their shop um. To be repaired, replace the internals, so we're now getting um water metering. Water meter readings from there. When we were doing our work, we found some sediment in the water. Um weren't exactly sure where that was coming from, turned the pump down to prevent any um further issues. A couple of the guys went out today, um flushed that out, it's all cleared up, um that run in a full speed over there, so no issues. Uh over at Whispering Ridge, um there is a temporary generator hooked up, uh total energy is out. To replace or to remove the radiator that needed to be replaced and the. Um thermostat housing. Um they took the radiator back to their shop, called me about two hours later and said. We should be able to have it repaired in two days, so. Um I'm cautiously optimistic that what was supposed to be a free week repaired. Uh might be done by end of the week or um early next week. Other, the all the materials for the. Chemical feed improvements over there are ordered, uh the last piece is supposed to arrive on Wednesday. Um so depending if that actually makes it here on time, um probably get those installed uh next week or following me. Um so other things that we have going on, uh as far as the water system goes. So water requires a um cross connection control inspection to be done. Um every ten years for residential, every two years. Uh for commercial industrial public authority higher risk um until they. Get looked at the first time and determine whether there are high risk uh situation. Basically, what I was looking for is if there's anything um on the property that could. Potentially siphon back into the water system, somehow be a contamination of the municipal supply from that individual. Um so you have proposals in your packets. Um for both the residential and the non-residential. Um on the residential, uh if you look at those numbers, I think it's only um hundred and twenty-two ish. That's because one, um all the new connections were made over the past two years. Uh cross connection. Inspections were done at the time of those, so we don't have to get back into the homes to do those. Um in addition to that hundred and twenty-two residential, um there's also those commercials that's on a on a separate proposal. Um because those are done on that more frequent interval. And then there's a third proposal off of the Hydro Corp. Um one of the discussions that we had is. DNR require, PSC requires that you either test all of your meters every ten years or replace them on a twenty year interval. And so while we're going back into homes, um. Why not? Get your meter replacements to align with your cross connection inspection, so there are. Uh seventy-six meters that would need to be replaced um. To stay on schedule before your next cross connection inspection, so there's a separate proposal for Hydro Corp in there. Um to do seventy-six. Cross connection inspections and uh meter replacements all at the same time, so it would be. One entry into your into each. Property um to do.
Those uh seventy-six properties are the original connectors. To the system, this cross connection inspection was something that. Uh has never been done, but by state statutes is required. So we're behind the eight ball on that. It was also a feeling that because we. Have had problems. Uh with accessibility from some folks. That rather than have. Come in and replace these meters, we would we would have Hydro do it. When they did the cross connection inspection, so only one person, one time would be. Uh into the building would require accessibility, thereby less aggravation, hopefully. By doing this. Uh the total cost. For the first year, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah. But it's under forty thousand dollars for residential. And for the business. Properties that we have here. Uh and the replacement of the meters. That cost. This is a a one-year uh proposal. To accomplish those things. Then uh the cost depending on. Uh what they find would be proportionately lowered. For any years afterwards. This is basically to bring it up to speed uh in areas where we haven't been in the cast. Uh with the residential things and. Uh to bring us up to speed with. Replacements as well as inspection. Replacements as well as inspection.
With that being, I would have said. Would any of that by chance it will be falling under that contingency fund to water? That's it, you know, that's related.
We had meter replacement replacements already listed as in contingency projects. So cross connection control, we're going to talk to them about that.
Yeah, because I'm just saying if we've got the money in there and use it for that.
Yeah, that'd be a way to shake away at that.
Right. And I would, I'm assuming that the the seventy-six replacements. Based on historical knowledge of the system, those are primarily going to be Whispering Ridge on those. That's going to be the bulk of those.
But the one thing to note, the proposal numbers do not include the cost of the actual meter. So that is the village providing the meters to. Hydro to install.
Yeah, those are.
Those would be the Badger meters?
Yes, and that's another thing. Uh we've. Pretty much got to put an inventory in. Badger Meter stipulates that they're sticking ones out. Uh into in manufacturing. Our meter supply distributor from Badger does have about a hundred in stock that we can put our hands on. Uh and that we should probably do that right away and then put an order in. To Badger itself or to the distributor for anything else that we need. That's uh Mid City's suggestion.
So um just in case you're you're wondering. Cross connection for residential is at thirteen four sixteen. Water meter replacements at thirteen four eighty-eight. The approximate cost of the meters themselves is twenty-six thousand six hundred. The commercial cross connection inspection is five thousand five hundred and fifty-six. Total bill is fifty-nine thousand and sixty dollars. For residential, commercial, meter replacement and meters.
That was right. It's over sixty. I would make a motion that he approve Hydro Corp. For the cross connection inspection and meter replacement as needed. Uh to that existing properties. And the cross connection uh inspection for commercial properties.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. Do we want to include any action or directions regarding ordering of?
Meters, yeah.
Meters.
I would direct Mid City to place an order with our distributor. For a minimum of one hundred meters. And possibly uh order an additional fifty.
I'll work with Ben on that because there's some various sizes that we need to raise on all of our development targets. And then we'll look into if we can use contingency funds for any or all of that.
Yeah, no, have minimum meter replacements. Yes, we'll ask about the cross connection.
We have an amended motion.
Well, in my second.
You have a good second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And twenty. Discussion the possible action of replacement of the generator at Village Hall.
I've uh. Reached out to a couple of organizations about replacing that generator by bringing it down by ground level. And I meeting. With two gentlemen later on this week. Initially, that thing was put in there with a self-testing board. And uh the gentleman who put it in used to be a board member. And he tells me that that board was struck by lightning. And so it doesn't test itself anymore. We don't have that capabilities. That's number one. Number two, it's on the roof and not everyone that wants to service that thing wants to go up on the roof. So what I propose uh is to bring it down here, put it between the two entrance ways to the village hall and to the garage. Uh put bolsters up to protect it. The natural gas connection and line are right out there. Scott from N S I is coming out Wednesday and then who from uh Brookfield wants to take a look at it. Potentially, we're looking at probably a twenty thousand dollar replacement. The unit itself is somewhere uh that would be a fourteen to a sixteen K W. We got a twelve K W up on the roof. Uh we feel that it's necessary to increase the size because of all the electronics that we're adding. Uh to the the village as far as uh meter readings and things like that. As well as that eight twelve K W does not uh handle the garage area. Uh and all of the accessibilities that we need out there. So we figure that uh somewhere between a fourteen or sixteen K W would be needed out there. So. I would request that that or I would suggest that we uh go for bids. Uh once we get uh finalized proposal, then open bids up. Uh to uh change the generator from its location and its size.
Will there be any um? Any roof repairs that are going to need to be done if we remove that?
If we remove it, and that's one thing that I want those folks to to take a look at. If we can leave it up there and not damage the roof. Or if we take it down, do we have to replace half the roof? Maybe the better part of the dollar would be to leave it up there and just disconnect everything.
So uh what would you like us? To do on this item? Do you like to just table this until you've had an opportunity to get your proposals?
Yes, I'd like to table it. Uh till I can get the proposal here and then address that next one.
I'll make a motion. We table item until uh. Ron is able to get proposals for replacement and removal, possible removal of the old generator.
We have a motion and a second to table item twenty. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item twenty-one, discussion possible action on current maintenance and improvements to Willow Lane.
We had some problems with Willow Lane as far as calling. From question as to whether or not that property was owned by the village. We asked Strand to investigate. And Strand, how about Ben? It's all yours.
Yeah, we uh went ahead and. Ordered the title searches, got those results back. And uh what we found is. Um a trail of a lot of legal documents that had basically. Simplified, I'll say like reservations for future road or reservations for use. But the process was never completed. Uh and therefore, as it stands, that whole roadway. Uh is private. So the it's, you know. If if folks wanted that road to be public, those. Processes would probably have to be started over because they're undocumented that. Are fifty years old and and the areas they designated as being reserved for road don't sign up with where the road actually is and all that. But. Uh there'd be quite an undertaking of a, you know, professional land surveyor's effort to make that public if. If there was an interest in making it public, but as it stands right now, it's private.
And the if we were to make it uh public. And take over the responsibility, we would have to pay this. That paving clause is probably around estimate three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right, and just to be clear, it's not as simple as just. Grading and compacting and peeping over what's actually there. It doesn't meet the minimum width work right now for the nominee Falls Fire Department. They'd have to have a stop turn around down there. Um so you're talking about, you know. Completely undercutting the whole thing, making it wider. It's like building for ending road based.
So the proposal is this. Uh that we work with Hector. And write up a. An agreement between the landlords down there, each and every one. The village would use its public work. Vehicle plow. Uh and go down there and plow it out. With a raised plow, it wouldn't be scraping the ground. Because it's all gravel back there. Uh and liability wise, where we put the snow would have to be agreed upon. Uh we'd have to cut some things back because even with our small truck. We wouldn't, we were not able to get back in there with the pad that we're doing this with that. Whatever we do, we do. There's no guarantees that, you know, it's going to be one lane, two lanes. We'll just push it out of the way. Otherwise, we let the people do it on their own path, as you.
So you like an M O U with a indemnification clause?
And it would all have to be, all the owners would have to agree to it. In order for us to do the polling with, you know, our municipal trust.
Yeah.
Yeah, we we discussed that to Public Works. And we said, you know, that'd be the right thing to do, but we have to have their. Approval.
So if it's a private road. Are there any other private roads in the village that are going to be expect, they're going to expect to have plow services from the village? Um you know, like why would you plow? Like this might be dumb question, but why would you plow a private road?
A similar situation when we had the grinder pump issue with. Mr. Lord and a couple of the other properties where. President had been said that. Getting maintained by the village. Feeling is is that. You should continue to honor that. You know, to to the extent that we can without exposing the village.
Something that doesn't last us. Okay. Question answered, thank you.
Well, um I think the the point is a good one. If you do it for these folks. Will you have the responsibility for private roads? I'm reflecting and I'm thinking about this, about the fact that um. The newer developments that the village has approved. All have private roads. And those developments pay substantial taxes because of their assessed value. They're newer. Uh if you fall back on that practice, it's in precedent. These newer developments will at some point also be able to. Use that same logic. So it's. It's a complicated question that you have to resolve. I've seen this play out in the city of Brookfield. Where. The city over years approved the development of. Kind of complexes. With private roads. And then they came to the realization uh in those condo complexes. That it is difficult to get contractors. And that the cost is just right in their building control. So they asked the city to do it and the city had known private roads. And we don't. Plow private roads. So they exclude the city. The state court, federal court. And their logic was. We have the individual units. And. These individual units pay as much in taxes as the individual homes. The individual homes have. Well, ultimately, fortunately for the city of Brookfield, uh the court. Rule in that case that there was no basis because they had entered into a contract. When you improve the development. That these would be private roads and there would be a responsibility for the assessment. But here. Uh you 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 have some variables and um. You may have all the individuals participating. But I I would have a hard time imagining that they would not all want to participate because. Individually, they would have a very difficult time getting in and out of the property. But. It's it's a risk that someone takes when they buy property. Uh as to whether the property will have or not public access. So. I would recommend that. You table this. And study it further in terms of cost implication long term for the village. Because the village itself. Uh had challenges in going out for a snowplowing contractor. I do not know what. The overall assessment of their services. Uh turned out to be. But. You're just adding the burden of the village. Uh with regards to the maintenance of the streets. If you accept this responsibility. Without. Being very deliberate about it.
And this goes back to the process of nuisance properties or code violations or, you know, like, like if you set a precedent. You follow it then. You know. Even though this became a private road by attrition, you know, it sounds like the title search was required in order to determine that it was in need of private loan. I don't know. It's, you know, do you think that we should continue to maintain it? I mean, there's something to be said for goodwill. I don't disagree with that at all, right? Should we?
I'll make a motion. And bring in the residents. Of Willow Lane for Public Works Committee meeting. And discuss the alternatives with them. And bring the results back to the board.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item twenty-two, discussion of possible action on good hope road repairs and cleanup, including approval of adopt the highway application permit. You're up again, Ron.
In your package, you've got an application. From two entities. To take care of the roadside. On good hope to clean it up, to maintain it. It's a form that adopt the highway. Uh that's a statewide program. In fact, it's a nationwide program. Uh where folks. And with uh. Municipality approval. Do these sorts of things and a minimum thing which absent is they have to do a walk through cleanup pickup. Twice a year. Cross roofing systems by Buck Buckley. And uh Buck Buckley's total basement finishing are the two entities. They filled out the requirements. Uh they proposed the permit. They would like to get started. The village's responsibility. And this would be to provide uh safety vests. Uh with a cost of approximately eighty dollars. To provide garbage bags and garbage bag pickup once they're filled. And we can do that with our equipment without a problem. The garbage bags are just. Standard run-of-the-mill garbage bag contractor's bag. You can get it, roll return, Menards, any of them. And then uh providing a sign. And adopt the highway sign and we've got them here. To recognize the effort by these groups. And that the village would provide. I've gotten one bid uh for two signs. One for each entity. Uh that would include mounting. Making the hole, etc., of about eight hundred dollars.
Seems like a good deal to have somebody who wants to make it nice and pretty. Seems like a good investment.
And also uh. A side note. You'll notice that uh we do have markings now. Uh, yield sign on the highways. A good hole up by the bug line and main street down here by the bug line where it crosses. Uh, thanks to the car show. And to Jan, uh, they agreed to purchase one of those. So.
Nice. Nice.
I would entertain a motion, I would like a motion, to make a motion. Uh, to approve. Uh, the two entities, possibly by Buck Buckley and, um.
Buck Buckley's total basement finishing.
That's the one.
I move that we accept plus roofing systems and the application from Buck Buckley's total basin. Finishing to be designated as adopt a highway at, um. Um, sponsors, I guess, about always.
And that would be specifically for good hope. You're putting main and the role of well.
I'll second that. Motion and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, number twenty-three, discussion of possible action on approval. Of offer to purchase the nineteen twenty-nine Porsche. Ron, do you want to start to this? You won't be there.
Uh. That first was the original engine. In the village of Landis. Um. It was sold that one time. Down to a collector down in Illinois. And, uh, when he offered it for sale. We got first choice retail to buy it back. And the Plagetainers at the time. Uh, was the organization that raised money to support the fire, the fire department. Um, I was directly involved with it. Uh, you look at the plaque, my name is up like a few others. Uh, we bought that engine back here, um, we maintained it. Uh, we showed it off. Um. When the fire department was disbanded. Uh, it kind of got lost. From what I've been led to believe, it was, this was after my retirement, but the current chief. Uh, sent it over to the town of Lisbon to be kept over there. Uh, Tom and Lisbon didn't want it. Uh, there was an individual. Uh, in the village here who said he'd take it and, uh, keep it in their garage. And that happens to be on Main Street.
It happens to be what?
It happens to be up at my, on Main Street. So, uh. Long and short is. Uh, we don't have a fire department anymore, we don't have any way. Uh, of showing it off, basically. Uh, so these folks. Have agreed to purchase it. With allowing us the right to buy it back if they ever decide to sell it. Uh, it's running. Uh. I guess one thought would was to put it here in the garage with a, a glass garage door. And light it, even years ago, we did stuff that. At a village for me and individually, uh, it could still be done. It's a piece of history. Uh. But without having a fire department. Anymore. Uh, it's kind of loses its. Appeal. So. My recommendation is we sell it. As the village does own it. We have, we can hold a title. Who sell it to this. Group of people that want to maintain it, that will make it available to us, should we have a parade. Uh, and, uh, if they decide to sell it, their first opportunity would be to buy it back.
Yeah, so I think, um, you guys, yeah, everybody has this in their packet. I think they did include a right of first refusal. It's, I've. Also received indication that you're. No longer a requirement for a duplicate title, um, since we don't seem to have the original one anyway, right? Um, and then.
And the price is okay with everyone? I mean, I don't know what a twenty-nine, uh, person is trying to be, but you'll need.
Seems reasonable to me. I think the one, uh, another consideration is, uh. Counsel has pointed out that we should add, um. And in as is condition. Just so that there's no implied.
They'll be calling you in about five minutes.
I agree with Ron, I think, uh. I think it's, it's better to have something like this be in hands of enthusiasts and collectors. Who appreciate it, who maintain it, who show it. Instead of having it just sit in a garage somewhere. Not seeing the day of life.
Yeah, still low volume.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can always buy back if they ever decide to sell it, so.
How much are you selling it for?
Oh, you're gonna double the offer?
You want me to make the motion, Ron? Uh. I'll make the motion that, that we have to. We, uh, get this. On the first.
I'll second it.
Look for change of, uh, as is condition.
And I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second, the other. Thoughts, considerations? All those in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So we'll probably want to just. If you, you have the original of this document or give the backed copy?
Not with anybody.
Well, let's, we'll work together, get this. Redraft it next. We'll have this done. Thank you.
Thanks.
We don't care if he's got the original, we need his checkbook.
Item number twenty-four, discussion of possible action on the big streets and roads for all grant twenty-three, since program is due by July tenth, twenty twenty-three. Colleen brought this to our attention. So I'm gonna ask you to. Yeah.
Okay. All right, so there is a grant, um, that's available to us, um. It is part of. A billion dollars that the federal government is making available to municipalities across the country, uh, program of effective grants, planning and demonstration pla- grants and implementation grants. Um. If we have, uh, if we have developed a self, uh, comprehensive safety action plan. Uh, we can use the money to, uh, do that. Implementation grants are used to fund projects that are consistent with an existing action plan. So we are eligible from what I can tell, um, from the eligibility. Um. Timeline is that by July tenth at five P M, we need to have our, our grant. Applied for, our first step would be to go to Baker Tilly. To have them assist with, um, what we would need to have as a cohesive plan in order to apply money, in order to execute it. Um, this came across my desk the same day that Dennis sat, you know, hit up at this intersection and I was thinking if there's something we can do with, with roadways, um. You know, work with the police department to identify areas that could use some improvement, maybe we could even get some sidewalks put in. Um, so what we would want to do is, is meet with our leadership and see if we can get a plan together and then get a grant application in. And see if we can't, um, get some of the money that's available from the federal government to implement, um, road improvements, safety improvements. They're particularly interested in things like. Um, ADA, if we have any sidewalks that don't have ramps to them, if we want bike lanes anywhere, things like that. And, uh, I'm interested in this, so I'd be willing to help, um, put something together. We do have a tight timeline though, so. Um. It's kind of a public's work thing.
That's public safety.
It's public, maybe public safety, okay?
Is any of this, uh, all under the realm of the new beautification? The Arpa funding?
Yeah.
Well, we're asking for more money, so I want to keep all of the Arpa money and I want to get more. You know, so.
So I think, I, I, I think there are some opportunities here, given the short timeline, obviously, we're not going to be able to take advantage of the full scope. And there are going to be certain things where we're going to meet resistance with things like. Sidewalks where, you know. Uh, Ben has already approached school districts about. You know. Funding and doing sidewalks and making it a safer walking, biking community and frankly, they aren't interested in those because it takes away from their federal funding they get for bussing. So, um. You know, but if we can, if we can have some effect, um, that's better than nothing.
And they're saying that, uh, brands have an expected minimum amount of a hundred thousand dollars and an expected maximum of. Ten million, although those are only going to go to large municipalities. Ben, your thoughts?
I'll say the place where we. Run into a brick wall is either with the school district or with the county. Is that. In their minds, Landon's problems aren't a big enough problem for them to kind of. Spend money to rent it, right? So. Um, the problems in Landon, I've looked up the crash report data, um, which is part of the application criteria. Um. You know, landings where you have the. Traffic incidents occurring are all in county jurisdiction roads, right? Um, so in the past, when I approached the county about. Uh, making applications, um, they said they would. Most of these federal things are eighty percent federal funded, twenty percent local funded. The county's never been willing to. To come up with the twenty percent. I said, if Landon's willing to come up with the twenty percent, well, then we can talk, right? Which is kind of a little bit backwards, but nonetheless. Um, I always feel that a good plan helps. Can advocate for ultimately the project. Um, so I've petitioned the past. You know, the school district to. Apply for something and make a plan. Um, and they were unwilling for the reasons Patrick stated, but if the village were. To go ahead, uh, with a plan, I think that's a reasonably good shot at getting. The entities that actually have jurisdiction. Um, to help take some action. Um. Where we have seen in the past, Colleen, you're probably aware on their website, they have examples of past project awards. Uh, where they have been for plans, they are kind of in the hundred fifty thousand dollar neighborhood. Um, et cetera. Um, put together a potential scope for the school district to undertake, which would easily get. You know, up into that neighborhood, um. So I. Um. One thing I'm stopping short of saying is. I have no idea what the chance. Of the bill being successful is. Um, the awards from last year were limited to. I believe like, uh, Green Bay, Madison, Kenosha, and I think whatever county Park Falls was in or something like that. But the program was relatively new and unknown, so. Uh, you know, presumably there'll be a lot more awards for communities like Landon. This go around.
So do you think it's possible for us to put together a safety plan that needs a comprehensive enough safety plan in order to meet the deadline for application?
Uh.
I mean, because think about a safety plan, I mean, you could bring it down by sidewalks by.
Action plan grant or, or an implementation grant?
There or, which is the better.
So you'll want to go after any application plan grant, you can only do the implementation grant if you have an existing plan. I would say it's pretty impractical to come up with a meaningful plan that's going to score well on a grant application.
Yeah.
To do an implementation projects.
Okay.
I, I would. Think your best chance is to come up with an action plan grant.
And that would be a grant that would help fund the, the studies.
Correct.
I understand.
The grant that would help fund the study. The outcome of the study is an action plan.
Right.
Um, and I don't mean to sound at all morbid, but. I think the fact that Lanning does not have any fatalities. Like the crashes have been injury related, but not fatalities. I think you're going to find that. Uh, because it's a competitive. Process, communities or roadways that have a problem with fatalities get priority funding over. Lesser grade accidents. And I have no real concept for. Hey, does that mean you're not likely to get some? I don't know, but it puts you further down.
Well, I would think that.
I think if, if you have the energy to lead it and go for it, I would say, go for it. Um, if you were going to ask. An entity like us. Uh, we would probably say, you know what, your eight thousand dollars to pay us, put this application together is better spent elsewhere.
Right.
But if.
Some on my own. I'll make something up.
You know, you're speaking about Grant. Does anybody know who Jennifer Grant is?
No.
She happens to be a lady who ran for the county board. Uh, had never been involved in politics. She was mom. And despite having, I think, uh, these four children, she's on the county board and then she. Resigned. And then she was reappointed back to the board. What? What is especially interesting about her is that she is. The county representative. That covers land. And I think that it would be who the village, regardless of whatever you do. About this grant application, to cultivate a relationship. With the county board supervisor so that at least. Instead of just knocking on the service counters and asking. Uh. The transportation industry of the county to maybe try to get some. Uh, attention given to Landon through the back door, through the elective representative. I strongly urge you to invite her. To a meeting and invite people. Who are concerned about this problem. It doesn't necessarily have to be the board meeting, but the public safety committee. Uh. And my refrain would be, do we really have to wait for someone who's killed? Before the county pays attention?
I'll also say that. Um. That's a great idea. For one, and for two, the county might help you write the application.
I believe we sent me. That you did send me the information. I can be sent.
Senator Walker Show, county government.
Yeah.
Um, and I would also say whatever information that you share for this would probably be useful for a couple of other. Regular grants, including, uh. With Scottus Transportation Alternative Program. For TAF grants that would be specific for. Uh, bike paths and sidewalks. Um, they have a highway safety improvement. Uh, land grants. That one is highly weighted for crash. Volume of crashes and crash severity. But I think if you prepare the information, you'll find it useful.
Okay, well, Amy Martin, you're chairman of public safety, Ron Nellis, you're on public safety, could we have, um, could you invite me to a meeting? Of public safety and maybe we could brainstorm on what's, um. Yeah, like where would we want a sidewalk, would we like a bike lane, which road would you like widened? And then I'll do some of the fat. Channel stuff and see if they help us and then maybe you guys can help me come up with some ideas to, to put on a brand. Am I?
All the chair has to do is put it together.
Well, um, I guess for this item, then we should just table it and, and I'll just. Maybe work, seeing if there's some possibility to it, and there's no action that we need to do.
Just make a motion to table it.
Okay, I will make a motion to ta- table. Um, item number twenty-four of the agenda for the safe streets and roads grants, um, pending further, um, investigation with the public safety.
Second.
Now, a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Colleen, for bringing that opportunity forward.
Motion carries. Thank you, Colleen, for bringing that opportunity forward.
My honor.
Uh discussion of possible action on the usability provided email of councilor elected officials. So I was asked to put this on here, um. I had requested um that Brenda have the I T company set up a a separate email account for me um when I was elected to president, just to create some separation, not only for my own sanity, but for simplicity and cleanliness. Um, I I think it's a good policy. To segregate those things as much as possible, and I just thought I'd bring forward the opportunity or the discussion at least on whether or not all village officials um should in fact have the village of Lannan email accounts.
That way we can prioritize. You know, right now it's just our personal account, so if you're scrolling through thirty emails a day, you may miss that one email from a resident who has a concern or complaint. Whereas if you're logging into a a a village email, you know right away, these are gonna be, you know, village related, right?
So I also, you know, this was an area of concern in the past as well, when we had some FOIA requests um related to a past president. Um, and it just became a very arduous, difficult time consuming task, I think, to assemble all of the communications that would be required, whereas if they're in a in a separate email account all by themselves, you just simply just dump the whole thing. There you go.
And they're on the village server, you know, then you're not obtaining records from anyone. It's just there. It's, you know, there's no denial of it.
And then we, the only other thing we would have to uh I suppose discuss is, you know, how do we transition those accounts when new trustees are elected? You know, does does the new trustee just simply take over the the person they're replacing's account and just get carried forward from there? So you have that knowledge transfer and historical data, or do we set up a new one? Uh, but those are two options to consider. I don't know if there's a recommendation by councilor.
I think that from the standpoint of records management, it probably is uh beneficial to segregate each uh incumbent's records with the understanding that, number one, the records uh can and should be preserved going forward in case there's some future requests that goes back in time of looking for some kind of communication. And more importantly, from my standpoint, dealing with a number of communities, um it protects your privacy. In other words, uh in litigation, uh there can be essentially a lockdown order which the court, actually the attorneys involved have to enforce it. Just read what you have and you can't change things. And if you are receiving communication related to your elected position, uh that can create havoc. Uh, your uh computer can even be seized under certain circumstances. And just the sheer time and cost, we had a couple of public records requests made in the past. And if all of the communication had been consolidated in one server or a particular elected trustee, it would have reduced the cost and time by a fraction of one-sixth of what it actually took. So uh I would urge you to implement this, if nothing else, uh demonstration project basis covering the trustees initially. And once you work out the bug here, then you can take the next step to determine whether you want to have accounts for other people, having a fine commission, and the Board of Appeals and so forth. Most community would really limited to uh the uh elected official. And this is a convenient way for constituents to reach you because that's posted uh on on the village's website. And they can reach you anytime of the day by sending the email.
Right, so Patrick set up a president app. Um, I'd kinda like to see Colleen dot Lake at Village of Lannan and Amy dot Martin. And then that record stays with that incumbent. And then um, you know, I don't know if it gets deactivated when you're out of office, but but all the records continue to be stored. Because I can't afford to have my business, my personal be um commingled with something that would be um exposed to a a public records request. Uh, it would devastate me.
The motion. Anybody, yeah, ready else on board?
Alright, I will make the motion that the Village of Lannan adopt an official trustee.
President.
Yeah, uh an a uh an elected official email address format. Um, that would be set up on the village system. That all I have to say?
Sure. I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to uh establish elected official email accounts. Any further discussion?
Do we need to allocate money for this? Is this something that's gonna cost money from? We have money.
Yeah, I mean, it's nominal, but it it will as we continue to build those debt accounts as they, you know, there will be a maintenance cost associated with being one of those.
So do we, do we have to address that now, or if it's in the budget, it should be okay?
I think you should review it at budget time right now. You know, the startup is nominal, I would think.
So we have motion second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh Brenda, discussion of possible approval of kidney bills for postage meter.
So with our new system, we have gone to um full page um utility bills um that require to be folded, stuffed, sealed, stamped um every quarter that we do that. Um, so far, um keeping track of the time that it has taken me about five to six hours usually um to get that all done. Um, the postage meter would actually seal and stamp it and just keep running them through um once we have them stuck, so it would probably save on some time on our end. In my very previous usage of one of these was was a long time ago, but you just keep adding the postage on there instead of going to the post office to get the stamps and just completely put the stamps on. So we could just automatically put the postage on the machine and use it that way.
The rate is cheaper too.
Yeah, I think they do give you a little discount on the rates.
So that's hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-nine cents a quarter.
Plus postage.
That you would need.
So any federal service agreement?
Um, this is the services that they had sent me. Um, I don't know about the um well, it's a lease, so I believe that they would fix for, you know, whatever.
I think there's some consumables you have to pay for, like ribbon.
Ribbon.
It's nominal, yeah.
I'll make a motion that uh we approve purchase of the kidney boards, postage meter in the office. You have a motion and a second, Hector?
I did not spend any time looking at very fine print here, but I can tell you from my personal experience, when we uh became part of the run reading firm uh about eight years ago, we had, and I forget who the provider was, we had a lease agreement. And called them up and we said, uh, we are leaving here and we're becoming a new entity. And briefly, the message was, uh, uh, not so fast. You have a lease with us. And this lease obligates you to buy out the balance of the lease uh or just continue to send us some money every quarter. So I think that that should be exploited fairly.
Okay.
Along with the maintenance, operating costs, and the replacement of these devices as to whether this is going to be a new device that's gonna be delivered to us or a refurbished device. We've heard a lot of these happen in circulation for a while.
Okay. Now, this is a sixty-month lease, so we decide to incorporate uh into a different entity, we'd have to pay postage for sixty months. I don't plan on becoming a nominee falls anytime soon, I can.
Okay, motion second and some exciting discussion. Well, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item twenty-seven, discussion of possible action on payment of the bill.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
We have a recommendation to pay the bills. We have a second. Yeah, Ron, second. Okay, we have any discussion? Brenda, I have some discussion. Any anomalies here that you think we should be aware of?
Um, well, the um general obligation um notes um that support interest payment is due. So you have those on there. Um the bill for being on the treaty is on there. Um.
Did they give us a deal on that or just only the partial bill?
Um, no, I thought it was supposed to be sixteen.
Yeah, it was only sixteen, yeah, but.
Sixteen hundred.
They they.
Oh, different company.
So it's, so there is, it is.
Go, Ryan, go.
Um, everything else is pretty standard repetitive from every month.
So was the pay comp payment the like additional?
It's the next installment. Um, Bill Rudolph um spoke with him and um asked, you know, how much rather he's gotten on um that implementation of the new website makeover. Um, and so they um agreed to that amount.
Okay, yeah, I'll be sending out an email to a lot of people about the website now that we have committee appointments and chairs and all sets. Alright, we had a motion and a second and any other question, comments, question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item twenty-eight, engineers report.
I've got a list of about ten things.
My bed. Forty-five minutes.
Unless you have any questions, I don't have anything to.
Um, twenty-nine, attorney's report.
Uh, ditto with regard to the engineer.
Oh, I thought you meant the bedtime reporting.
Uh, item thirty, president's report. Um, we did in fact intend to address this request.
We did, we did approach.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm I'm gonna skip that ones. Um, I just wanted to uh thank Don Summers and trustee Kelly uh for their time and service on the board. It's much appreciated and perhaps we'll see you up here again. Um, I'd like to thank all the people that did support me in the election and that entrusted me with this responsibility. I thank you. And that's all I have. Uh, item thirty-one, may convening in the flow session to sue it to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five-one G for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation, which is likely to become involved in with respect of failure or certain properties connected to available means for water service and ability planned by the commencement of enforcement actions seeking the imposition of fines and or instructions compelling their action.
What a graphic.
I'll second. The motion is second and there is both touching, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Mark, yeah. Six head?
Nope. Yes. Where you.
You didn't tell me you're gonna have to stay up so late.
We had to make it first.
Hey, do you wanna, do you wanna reapply? You know, you wanna fill out that two, two question.
It's quite lengthy this time. I'm trying to tell myself. Obviously, I'm gonna call her and for.
Is this closed enough or do we have to do something?
Yeah.
Oh, Patrick, I have a question.
Oh, how is, but how is Kevin? I don't know. It's me on the.
Um, I'll have to dial him in. Uh, Kevin, I'm gonna call you.
If you, there you are.
All in favor? Second open session and trip them off the phone.
Alright.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second to adjourn me for the discussion. All in favor? Hector, you're earned.
Thank you.